I am Cree. I am a multi-passionate creative and I am CEO of Cree Speaks Media, which is a platform that is dedicated to showcasing diverse artistry and authentic experiences. I'm pretty well-known for being at the events, supporting the artists front and center, and I also consult artists on branding and marketing mindset. And just, you know, I really enjoy plugging people in to opportunities. They're like, "Cree, any artists to perform? Who do you think I should pick?" And I plug them in and, you know, we keep it rolling that way.
I'm Candace. I run an online music exploration community called But I'm Not a Critic Though, AKA Bin Act. I was born and raised here in Columbia, South Carolina, so I'm very passionate about arts here in the city as well as artists along the Southeast Coast.
I'm Darian McLeod. I'm a professional actor, director, writer, storyteller. I'm also a native of Columbia, South Carolina. I have a podcast, The Grain. You can find me in the magic purple circle and good to meet you guys, man.
I'm Austin Prescott. I'm a local videographer and editor in the professional world, and I also run a production company called AP Productions, where we put on local artists, specifically hip-hop and other people over the East Coast.
So let's just talk. Like I said, I have my opinions. I don't have specific knowledge about the individual gig of city council, but I know we're like politicians to be our leaders, to help us make decisions to lead us. And that doesn't mean we always have to agree with what they do even. But they are privy to information that we are not. They take our general opinion and hopefully consensus, and they make decisions regarding everything from schools to the quality of food we eat, the air we breathe. It's a big responsibility. So I think it's something that we have to think about. But also, I think, I like to flip that question. I think, are we, as a body politic, as the electorate, are we meeting up to that responsibility? You know what I mean? I'm gonna be honest. I didn't... I voted a few more times than most of you here. And for a long time, I just voted on the national stage, you know, for president, and I didn't really pay much attention to local politics. But the reality is, that's probably the most important, you know? So I'm still putting myself up on... I'm still learning. I don't know. What do you guys think?
I'm totally with you. I think it's very strategic. There's the marketing, the promoting of the local campaigns. It's almost like you find out about it at the last minute, then you don't even have time to research the local candidates. And then there are some people who do feel disconnected from voting because they're like, "Well, I never see anything happening for people who look like me." So my understanding of city council is they listen to, like you said, they listen to the concerns of the people. And they're kind of like that liaison, like, "Hey, we've heard the people. We have our city council meeting, and now we're gonna go to the mayor and the other people that, you know, can make decisions based on those opinions."
And I mean, just a little bit of a difference. I... My family prioritized all elections, but particularly, they used to push me to go out even for local. When I was younger, I would... Or I got into the habit of asking, "Hey, Mom and Dad, who should I vote for?" At least when I was like 18. And then as I got older, I just started doing my own research. So I've voted, of course, up at the national level, but the local level I've done too. And then I kind of... I still would vote, but I wouldn't do as active research until recently, when I became a homeowner. And so now I'm way more involved with it because everything down to, you know, like taxes and all that stuff, like it's built into this system. And so, piggybacking on what you were saying, I think that the responsibility of city council is to make sure that the city runs in all aspects, whether it be, you know, utilities or, you know, what we do have in our communities that make it safe for our families and, you know, friends and children and all that stuff. I think that's the job of the city council, particularly in the city of Columbia, either within the city limits or on the outskirts, whatever is considered Columbia.
Yeah, back on what you said too about like only voting on the national level, that's been my experience most of the time for voting. So I haven't voted on any local government. And it's not been like a super solid decision. Like you said, there's not a lot of in-your-face, like of like any sort of like propaganda for who I should vote for. And I remember specifically on the latest presidential election, when I was pulling in, the only thing... There was one lady out there who was like, "Vote for me." And like, that was the only thing that I had, so I voted for her. So I was like, "Well, I met her." Yeah, exactly. But like, that was it.
Cree, right? I must say, Cree, you said something that really, you know... All of us are saying the same thing, I think. One of the things that happens, I know this now because I have been more engaged, like you, more researching, a lot of local elections are won by like a handful of votes.
Yeah. And when you go back and look at... I mean, it's crazy. Sometimes you'll go back and look at the results, and I'm always just shocked to see how many people turn out.
They're like 12 people voted.
Yeah. And I'm not condemning them.
I mean, literally, yeah, you're like, "What?"
I don't condemn them because there's still some like adversities to making sure that you can get out, depending on...
Right, right, right.
Right, depending on either whether it be age or access or whatever, but it's crazy to think that...
But we can get out. That's why I said, "It's on us." You know, they say you get what you deserve. Politically, you get what you deserve. That's not quite true because you just pointed out, you just mentioned, a lot of disparities and inequities are baked in. You know, there's a lot... There's a lot to discourage you to vote, from voting, excuse me. There's a lot to discourage you from voting. But at the same time, like at my polling place, me and my wife, when we go, we're like rock stars. You know why? We're the only two people that go. They sit there, no joke, they sit there all day waiting for us, from our neighborhood. We are literally the only two people that go. And I'm not saying they say, "Oh, we're great." No, 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 because not long ago, you know, I wasn't going either, you know?
It's very flippant. "Oh, they've been in the seat forever," whatever, who cares?
Right.
Right.
And then thinking about like some of the... This election I've seen, it seems like an uptick, or maybe it's just me being more aware and doing my own research. But it does seem like, at least with local stuff, I've gotten a lot of information. Probably from a... Not from all the candidates, but from a couple in particular. I've gotten a mailer, which I actually... I used to throw them away. I'm not gonna lie. I used to be like, "Oh my God, who are you, person? I don't care." But like, I've gotten a couple mailers, and then I get to read them, and then I'll go online and like, you know, see their platform. So to talk about, you know, I don't even wanna phrase it as who's at fault, but like where the responsibility is, I believe it's a synergy...
Yeah, that's a better word.
Yeah. We're like the synergy... It should be a synergy for sure. I think that, of course, like the candidates that can campaign and do it, do it. But you also have to do the hard work, which I know there have been a couple of people going door to door.
It's a Jedi mind trick. The hard... Like, we live in this capitalist society that if you lie, will ground you into dust. And the harder you work, the more tired, the more fatigued you are, the more you wanna disengage. But there, and that's the trick. You need to engage more. In the past few days, this is not just local, this is also national. In the past two days, literally, I've had lively debates with two different people who did not believe that minimum wage was $7.35. They didn't believe that. And I was like, "No, it's $7.35." And they were like... And it's like, and it's been that way for a very long time. That's why people don't... When people, "Well, they're not coming back," they're just lazy. It's like, when you're working for... You can't go to McDonald's and get a hamburger, a full meal for $7.35. And that, and a whole hour you can't get a burger? That's not called laziness. That's disincentive. That's disenfranchised. That's abuse. But that abused person, us, we're the ones that need to... The only way, no matter whether you're rich, poor, black, white, whatever, 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 we all get to vote. No matter what advantages you think you have over me, we all get to vote. That's important. And you know, now, I know now it's cool for people like, "I don't vote," or whatever. And I can tell you, I don't like it. I don't like it. Like, I don't like it because that is the equalizer. If your vote is not important, it's a lot of people spending a lot of money to keep you from exercising that unimportant right.
A couple of things that I would like to see from the city, whether that be on city council or any other position, as far as it pertains to the artist community, is really just keeping it blunt, like truly building up the community like they think or they say that they do. Of course, now, we live in Columbia, South Carolina. We have a lot of different artistic spaces, whether it be the Columbia Museum of Art or what used to be TAP's Art Center or anything like that. So there are seemingly opportunities for artists. But I don't think that the city actually prioritizes it unless it's, you know, rocking New Year's Eve or a couple of other big events we have. Like, you scramble for artists at that point in time. You know, you're trying to find who's the best anybody here, but you don't know because you're not a part of the community, you're not active, and you don't actually host anything to see the community for when you put on those big events. So it always kind of makes me laugh when we... The city puts on like a big event and they're searching for artists. You know, they find somebody from wherever, when they're artists in their own backyard that they don't know. But one key thing is actually supporting or maybe there being a fund. And if there is a fund, if I'm misinformed, to actually know where that fund is, to maybe put on like a block party or something, you know, when it's safe. Like how Soda City has their own market every Saturday. Where is that for, you know, maybe music artists or people that wanna showcase, you know, visual art or digital art? Like, where does it exist? And again, if it does exist, show it to me.
So what you're talking about is a plan... Excuse me. Infrastructure.
Yeah.
Like, I've worked with a group, Amplify Columbia, when we address these type of things for artists, health insurance, you know, fair wages, housing. Just like any other worker, the same concerns that any other worker has, artists have. You know? Being an older artist and seeing different waves come and go, oh, you know, I have questions about, not just, we talk about the brain drain, how do we keep our young talent? How do we retain our older talent? You know? How do we engage? How do we make the community see the value in art? Because the value is there whether you see it or not. And it's not just commercial or financial. When you do the numbers, art makes a lot of money. A lot of money.
It makes the city a lot of money.
Exactly. But there are benefits beyond it. I have a question I like to ask people all the time. Name me one great society that did not produce great art. I'll wait. Name me one great society that did not produce great art. The only way you even know these societies existed is through their art. Through their arts and their architecture. Those are the only two things that last. Through their literature, through their music, through their dramas, through some, maybe a dance survives, whatever. These are the only things that happen. It is no coincidence that to have a thriving, great community, you have to have art. And you have to support your local artists. This whole idea that people have to leave here to be successful is deadly.
And a particular thorn in my side personally.
Well, I'm an actor. I'm an actor. Basically, if I'm not in New York or LA, I'm supposed to be dead. And I'm not a hobbyist. This is how I make my living. And I have other skills too. I'm a trained visual artist, recovering. I'm a storyteller. I do a lot of other things because you have to be able to hustle. But I'm tied into a community of creatives, people I know that are doing good work and viable work, that if these infrastructures were here, people could stay here and work, and not only that, thrive and make Columbia... I've always said Columbia could be a great little city. I don't think we should be striving to be a great big city. I think we could be a great little city. But that actually takes some actualization. That takes us determining that we want that for ourselves. But the tools are here. The tools are here, and it's up to us to do what we're gonna do. Pat, you said something great, you know, like it's just like fixing the pothole in the road. Providing that art opportunity for young people, for old people. And I'm talking just, not just K through 12. I do a lot of my practices with people post-retirement. I do a lot with students, but a lot post-retirement, you know, engaging our entire community, you know?
Back to what you were saying about having an infrastructure. I think it'd be two good steps to, one, have an infrastructure, but two, in that infrastructure, have a direct line of communication to our local government. So like, in terms of like, if you're putting on a production or some sort of show or something, and you need a venue or you need assistance from maybe the police or like an ambulance or just something like, anything involved in the city, you have a way to get it and obtain it through the local government that would maybe be in this infrastructure, which would also create networking opportunities amongst it. So I think definitely like not only having a place where you can meet and connect with other artists, but in that same place, having some sort of local government representation that creates this open line of communication to get better things done, in my opinion, so.
So I guess we're gonna close on the question of the value of art to our communities and by extension, why we think city council should value art, right?
I like it.
I think we don't have enough time to enumerate all the different things. But there's some obvious things. Our politicians, a measurable, a metric, a real metric is finances, money. Art generates money. And it's a good investment. You get a lot of bang for your buck. Most artists you know can take $10,000 and produce... As a matter of fact, I think most artists are their own worst enemy because you're so creative, you take $10,000 and deliver $100,000 worth of services. And people think it actually costs $10,000. It was actually $100,000 value. So a lot of bang for your buck. If we're talking about strong communities, that's the arts. Whether it's... And a lot of people don't think about that, whether it's, you know, your choir at church, whether it's to play at your kid's school, whether it's the band at your other kid's school, whether it's a local community theater, whether it's a local professional theater, whether you go out, hear a storyteller and whatever. All those things are community engagement. And we feel good about community. All those other, we're less violent. Our communities are safer. We vote more. We're more educated. Art can be a delivery system for so many positive things. And this is one thing I like to say a lot too. A lot of times as artists, we feel the need to justify our work. Well, you know, if your kid gets art, they'll be smart, and you'll make more money. And you know, your municipality has a chance to make more money. All that is true, but there's also something else. As a human being, you deserve art. You deserve beauty.
And chiming in on that, I think a very important part of what you said, of course, like the monetary value. But as we saw in the pandemic, like we clung, or I say "in the pandemic," what we're still going through now, clung to art, to the entertainment that we, A, couldn't go to. Like, I missed, you know, "Oh, I couldn't go out to live shows," or whatever it may be. And when, you know, when you started to see the trickle of it come back, whether it be like the guitarist that comes and plays at the bar or just being able to feel safe enough to go back to the art museum with your family or whatever that was, that was a saving grace throughout the entire, whether, you know, like the lockdown or whatever it was. So of course, there's a ton of monetary value, but it's truly invaluable. Like, thinking about what we missed when we went on lockdown or what we were... I can remember only tweeting about, "I miss shows. I miss concerts. I miss seeing people..." Like, especially in Columbia, art is what brings... That's how I see my friends. Like, that's how I congregate. Or when I was at USC, the Homecoming show or whatever productions they used to put on was where I got to have the community. So the money, what it can bring you monetarily is good, but the invaluable piece of being the staple in your life is extremely important as well. And Columbia is a very artsy city, and when people come, people actually remember that. But if you're... It's good that I like Columbia being remembered for that, but I also don't think Columbia takes enough pride in its art to say... To, you know, like, we get compliments because people enjoy being here because it's artsy or because our main street has multiple artists and we have Soda City. But Columbia doesn't put that same pride in itself or put that same effort behind it and then kind of reaps the benefits of how great the artist community is here.
Because that's why we need art. So we... There's also a way you can partner, or we can reach these young people. I don't feel like the young people have enough. It's almost like your parent has... Your parents have to be in a certain income bracket for them to have access to it. And I feel like there can be plenty of partnerships that could not only just bring money to the city, but also bring the community together. Like you said, mental health, you know? Plenty of music artists or visual artists that can go out to these schools and be their inspiration so that these children can see that you don't have to leave here. There's plenty of inspiration here. They... So they're thinking about their futures already based on their parents' income, you know? So they can see this art that is around us and use it to channel those frustrations. "I'm tired of school. Let me write a song about how I hate my teacher," you know?
Respectfully.
Respectfully. Yeah, so it's a way to channel, you know? It's a way that saves our mental health. It's a way we can, you know, come together as a community.
I think what you're saying too about having like local professionals go to schools and stuff is actually like a great idea. Because I know one for like when I was in school, like there was no one to come to tell me like, "Hey, you should turn to like..."
Teaching artists.
Yeah, exactly. Teaching... Like, basically, like, "You should turn to this when you're feeling bad," or something like that. So basically, to teach you how to channel your emotions into art. And I think that that would have been very helpful for me because I had to discover that on my own. And there might be people that just brush it off. Like, maybe they're not good at it, and they just don't wanna put time in. So they brush it off and don't even see like how that's actually helpful, even though they're not creating something that they could see as like a career or something. It's actually for them and benefiting their own mental health. So I think that would be extremely important.
And can I say one more thing to piggyback on what all you're saying? The K through 12 experience is great. And Columbia, Richland One especially, does a pretty good job at exposing students, children to art, exposing unlimited experience. But it's not just for students. It's not... It's for 35s, 45s, 55s, 95-year-olds benefit from exposure and experience with art. For most of us, the process of making art is far more important than the outcome. The process of making art, the things that those benefits give to us as individuals, and through that, it benefits our community. So the K through 12 is something that we're very... We're accustomed to. We talk about that. But if we can figure out, just think, we're... If you can figure out how to deliver art more, I won't say efficiently, equitably, all those good things to, like I said, retired age people, to mom and dad who are hustling, you know, to raise a family. And maybe they can't take lessons all the time, but they can maybe do whatever they can do just to engage. Everything improves. I have a little saying I like. "Art makes everything better." And it does. It makes everything better. From your local sports team to your local police department. You talked about mental health. The art of storytelling is something that's being explored now as far as people just have an opportunity literally to tell their stories and what that does for them mentally. And what that does when we share our stories as community, you know? When we find those commonalities or there's differences, and we build upon those. Or it's not all the time. Sometimes we challenge those, whatever it is. But the idea that art is, doesn't stop at whatever grade we stop, but continues, is a lifelong journey, or it can be.
A couple of final thoughts that I have concerning local elections and getting out and voting, and then how that ties into the art community is... I know personally, like if anybody who closely knows me or has heard me talk, knows me, is that I care a lot about my city, but it gets very frustrating sometimes to be from here. But I can't... I speak passionately because I care. And having this conversation is important to me because if city council can start, or like these local elections can start, helping out with resources and even whatever the little... Whatever you can start. I know we're not gonna go from zero to government funding to put on shows. Like, I know it's not gonna happen that way. But if city council can really start building the synergy between what... And with artist community, but really just with its people and the government, I think that we would be in a really good place, particularly what you were saying about being like a great little city. We could push the needle forward and finally move past where we've been for maybe the past 20, 30, 40 years. And I hate doing the comparisons, so I'm not going to use like certain cities. But like, you can see other cities in South Carolina that have surpassed us because of what, you know, what they started doing and how they got, I guess, to where they are, but whether it be with their communities or with their government. So I say all that to say, I really hope that some of these conversations and new leadership and more active, whether it be voting communities or just people who are out in the world, can push Columbia forward because especially people that are from here, we care about them. We wanna see it be better than what it is.
Okay, I'd like to piggyback on that because I'm a homeboy. I've elected... I've had... I've had enough opportunities over the years to leave Columbia for different professional opportunities. And I elected to stay here so much even... My homeboys are like, "What are you doing, dude?" But it's important to me. It's important to me. I work... I create art in the same neighborhood I grew up in. I get to travel the country representing my city, representing my state, my city, you know? I've made some things that I'm really proud of that are world-class. From right here, and it's important to me. Every school I've ever attended, I've gone there and worked with that community, with those students, with those teachers. That's important to me. That's always been important to me. And yeah, I would like to see that rewarded. I would like to see, make it easy for people who want to contribute to stay here, to contribute in whatever ways they do. And by easier, I mean, see us. You know, take us... Don't take us for granted. We're real. You know, we're not just hobbyists. We're professionals. I'm a trained professional. But so often, I think, you mentioned it, Cree... No, you mentioned it, Candace. We overlook what's right here and what's good. A lot of times, what's infuriating is who what's... Just to be honest, just not of the same caliber. Just like, wow. You know, if someone came to me like, "Wow, they're killing it," I understand. But if you hire someone else, like, I'm confused, you know? And we have a lot to contribute. We already contribute a lot. I think we already punch out of our weight class. But we have a lot to contribute, and we want to contribute. So my thing I would like to say to our elected officials, and also for the people running, and I must say this too. I've been to a few forums this season, and I'm really impressed with most of the candidates. That's true. That's true. I'm really impressed. But see us. See us for what we are, creators, professionals, human beings. See us.
I wanna say something. And you guys really... I like how y'all kind of floating to each other. And I'm also on the same page with you all. I was just having a talk with my friend the other day about some of the people who... Well, you spoke on. Artist burnout is very real. And what you're finding is the ones who contribute the most, like, I mean, contribute blood, sweating, tears, or getting so tired to the point that we're traumatized as artists where it's not that we don't wanna contribute. We have to take space away for our mental health. So what's happening is, you know, what happens when we decide to leave? Yes, other people step up. But you have some people who are not as passionate or who don't care. But you have some people who are not as passionate or who don't care. They care about profits. But you have people who, you know, we did, Candace, me and Candace, we, we are event curators. We've done this out of our own pocket, didn't even take home anything at times. And we were happy that we were able to provide a good time. So what's happening is people like us are, we're tired. So people would be less tired if there were more resources and if you saw us and valued us instead of, you know, like you said, going to other cities to, you know, there's people booking artists from Atlanta when we have a goldmine of artists here. We're out here doing the work. Austin is connected to artists. She's connected to artists. We're connected to artists. But we don't see people, you know, reaching out to us. And I don't, I feel like there's a lack of diversity and inclusion where it's the same people over and over and then they're gatekeepers. We want to, we need to make it more, you know, equal for everybody. Like let everybody, a committee, something you mentioned earlier, like, you know, the communication. If there's some committee, well, hey, we, we know these people out here. They have proof of their works. Let's get them on a committee together and let's hear from them. And they can, you know, we can serve as the council for the artists and then, you know, and they sit on the other side and listen. I feel like that would be very useful and you'll, and come out and enjoy what's here. Come out and see, you know, outside of those same five people the free times keep mentioning. But you know, let's, let's see what else is out there and enjoy it, cherish it and be grateful.
That's so funny how you're talking about the gatekeepers and stuff. Because being in, I mean, I'm more in the music world and the video world than any of the other art realms. But specifically around Columbia, like there's just like a specific couple number of names. That's what is always at the top. And then you don't ever see anyone like trinkle down below. And it causes those people below to never like build together and build a stronger connections than to help raise them up. They just all get kind of discouraged and just trinkle off and kind of like fall off on their own rather than being built up together. And that's where like, I feel like local government, where we had like a central line of communication and a place for everyone to come together. Like if there was something like that, then all those people would come up and build themselves up rather than just be discouraged by this couple of people that keep getting put on, basically. Because I've seen that a lot in the music world. Like I'm sure you guys know who Jetson May is, like up him and everyone there just kind of just got rose above and then everyone else was kind of forgotten in the hip hop scene. Exactly. Because they just look at Jetson and his little group of people. And it just gets very kind of clique-ish, honestly. So I feel like having some sort of way to bring us all together outside of something like that would be great and beneficial.
Outside of the people who are already there. What about the people that are rising and, you know, they deserve love and attention too. They need it more, honestly.
And to briefly tie in, I think what that, what that builds is like, again, talking about synergy, but it being so important because even as, like you said, as event curators, we get burnt out too when I have to fund an event out of my own pocket because I don't see it in my community because the, the event doesn't exist. Or, you know, some of the, some of the things are like jumping through hoops just to make sure the event gets put on or anything like that. But being able to have someone in your corner, like really basically just building the artistic corner where we can at least build each other up and say, "Hey, don't get discouraged because we've got an event Saturday and I'm helping put it on." And this person sponsored it. Instead of really just everybody planning an event all by themselves, outside of the network, hoping that something pops off.
Exactly.
Well, I want to bring it all the way back to the beginning. What you're talking about, what we are all talking about here is building an infrastructure, a real live, an agency that's a clearinghouse for artists to communicate with each other as well as other agencies that have resources and politicians. And there are agencies out here, a cultural affairs council. That's what most cities have. Cultural affairs council. And that's kind of a, over, and it may have different, you know, different names in different places. But it's kind of an umbrella. And it's not perfect, but it's an umbrella that a lot of things can fit under. We need agencies like that to help artists out. Like right now, it's, you're right, you're kind of out there on your own. And if you're plugged in, you can find certain resources. But even those of us who are plugged in are still struggling. Where if we had an umbrella agency that we could gather under, that we could communicate with each other, that we could know, old artists could meet young artists and blah, 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 work together, collaborate, blah, 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 you know? You know, it's not utopia. Art is, there's no way about, to be an artist is a hard life. You know, people often ask me, and I was like, if you, if it's the first thing you think about in the morning and the last thing you think about at night, you need to be an artist. If that's not the case, there's plenty of time, there's plenty of room for hobbies. There's plenty of room, there's nothing wrong with that. There's nothing wrong with that. But for the hardcore artists, professional caliber, we need help. We need help. And by helping us, we help everyone, everyone. And that's just fact. That's just truth. But, and by help, I mean, we need infrastructure. We need these agencies. We need money. We need health insurance. We need employment opportunities. We need further professional training. We need education. Those are real tangible things that we can get to improve our situation instead of just go, "Oh, I wish we know." No, let's ask for very specific things. So I would have to say to the council, you've heard part of my list. Those are the things that I am asking for. That me and my community, those are the things that we are asking for.
Can just make a check out to AP Productions right now. $50,000.
Get on the $50,000.